I have no noise now, can you talk to me?
Testing, one, two, three. Coach, can you give us a wave if you can hear us?
We should have coach coming back as well.
Coach, could you wave if you can hear us?
He's speaking.
Almost, almost.
Now he's giving us a wave, alright. Thanks, Coach.
Okay, Mac, is this a thumbs up?
I think we have no more feedback. If Coach can talk, I'm seeing level, I just don't know if he's saying.
Yep.
The area.
Perfect.
Perfect.
I think we're there, okay, we are good.
Thumbs up, okay. Welcome everyone to the Hartford Board of School Directors, it's September the 3rd, 2025. Kevin Christie is online and Garrett is the only missing member tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order, ask for any changes, additions, and then approval of the agenda. Any changes, additions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and it's approved unanimously, well, not unanimously. Because Garrett's not here.
No, it's unanimous.
That can be unanimous.
There are four people here.
Okay, you got it then. Okay, you got it then. Okay, thank you. We'll move along to governance policy, section four, Policy GP two, a PCB update on the latest testing and implications, and that will be Jonathan Garthwith.
Let's see if I do this right this time. Is that working all right?
Sure.
So I guess I'm speaking for the record, given the crowd.
If you pull it back towards you, that works way better.
Leslie?
Yes.
Okay.
This is awesome.
So supplemental air sampling took place yesterday and today, with one exception. One device did not function until the finish-up tomorrow. That supplemental air testing is what was suggested by the state and funded by the state after the last board meeting. That sampling is not a replacement for the required quarterly air sampling. It doesn't offset it in any way. It's truly supplemental. It was only done in the spaces on the B wing where there was some question about whether we should review the decision-making process as to whether those spaces should be used. So there were fifteen rooms sampled, as well as a baseline sample taken outside of the building, which is pretty standard. We should have been done today, but it's sort of one failed device, so they'll collect that in the morning. The state was asked, and they agreed, to pay for expedited lab work, so we should have those results first half of next week, Tuesday, hopefully, at which point they will go to the DEC and the Department of Health, and for almost everybody here, this is now a familiar story, they will issue a joint recommendation as to whether those spaces are suitable for use. That will become a decision for the board. So what you'll all have to decide is, we have a data set that said, don't use them, and a data set, a data set that resulted in a recommendation not to use them, and a data set that result, might result in a different recommendation, and you'll have to be the decider there. Really can't say more than that until we know what that data is. If it is consistent, that's great. If it conflicts, that's a conversation. After that, so that we are overdue for our quarterly sampling, but the DEC said they did not want to do the quarterly sampling until the supplemental sampling was completed and analyzed. Full disclosure, I'm not entirely sure why that's the case, but it's the case. So they gave us a pass, basically, said we're not out of compliance. So as soon as I get the green light from them, I'll reschedule, and those spaces will be then tested a third time in a three-month period, and you'll get another data set, and we'll also get the regular quarterly samples for the rest of the facility. While that's going on, and that has to happen quarterly as long as there are PCBs in the building. While that's going on, we're going to move forward with the ECA process, which we've talked about over and over, the evaluation of corrective action alternatives. We have one proposal in hand, and I'm expecting another one by the end of business tomorrow. So we'll have two solid proposals from acceptable, legitimate entities that have done this before, no wild cards. We will make a decision on who will be asked to create that document. When that document is created, there is a little bit of a thing to work out. At one point, the DEC said that they would not consider data that they did not request as part of the ECA, meaning the additional sampling we do in the rest of the building. I'm going to get them to confirm that, pro or con, so it's either included in the ECA or it becomes an addendum to the ECA. It's not going to slow us down. It's just a contentious little piece. So we will proceed with the ECA. The entities involved have told me that's a four- to six-week process, at which point you all will get to make another decision, because by definition, that ECA will provide alternatives. And those alternatives will be, you know, anything from the abatement, the removal of the material that you have previously discussed, to encapsulation, to shutting down portions of the, you know, it's supposed to look at alternatives, at which point, as we have clarified previously, the decision, how to proceed, will be entirely up to the district. We'll all know what the options are. My assumption right now, until somebody tells me otherwise, is that we're still focused on removing the PCB materials from the building. So the exercise of going through the ECA really is just that. It's a way for all of us to understand the kind of, the different gradation of response. I think where it's going to become really critical is, should the board continue to say, we want the toxins out of the walls, it is not unlikely that the state will look for some lesser solution and will therefore say, you are not eligible for funding beyond what we think you might do. And again, you all will get to stand up and say, this is what we're going to do. I like how I don't have to decide anything. I just keep pushing it here. At that point, we'll have a decision on how to move forward. So the next steps, and for very briefly here, without going into anything scientific at all, I just wanted to, I think it would be good for the record to step back for a minute and just say, from the passage of Act seventy-four, there was a series of actions taken. It started with, you know, the mandate to address this by testing the schools. That testing started with a survey by environmental consultants hired by the state. That survey is importantly and appropriately subjective. It's subject area, specialists and experts going in and saying, we think that's a problem. We think that's a problem. We think that's okay. That's how it should be. The next step is air sampling, which is objective only to the air in that room on that day, as we've talked about before. So the tests that we did yesterday mean something yesterday. They might mean something different tomorrow. So it's objective in the moment. The next step is material sampling, which is, okay, the air said we had something bad in the air, so it's the paint, right? That is objective to that paint, and the board took the next step to do the substrate sampling, which, again, gave us objective information about what the extent of this is. Then we kind of, as we get into the ECA process, it becomes more subjective again in terms of what is the right way to proceed, right? Because that is truly the desire of the board, and I think, you know, whether it's my place to say it or not, I'm going to say it. That decision has an impact, not just on the immediate expense, but also on the future of the facility. It has an impact on, obviously, the project that we plan and execute related to abatement and reconstruction. It also has a larger impact on the, in the context of redistricting. What does this district look like if we have this problem in the walls or if we don't? And this stuff is happening fast. So for my part, the reason I mention this progression and this kind of, this kind of polarity between objective and subjective decisions is, the subjective decisions are actually the most important ones. The objective things that we know are that we have PCBs in the walls, and everybody says they're bad for us. Those are the only two things that are truly objective. And from this point forward, as we move into this next stage, you know, we go through the ECA process and look at our options, the decisions that are made are going to impact, obviously, how we run the programs as we go through this whole thing. It's going to impact, you know, the, kind of a huge impact on my life, because it's an enormous project, but what does the school look like when we're done? What do we, you know, what modifications do we make? How do we incorporate kind of aspirational thinking about programs and then take that up to sixty thousand feet? When the state's looking at its options for redistricting and where we all stand, where does that put Hartford in that context? So I think that's why it's important to understand this started with Act seventy-four, and these years later, we've ended up with this decision that's going to have a really lasting, like, generationally impactful outcome. So once you all make that simple decision, it's just a project. It's just permitting and hiring a consultant to handle the abatement, just like I do when we replace an asbestos floor. It's, you know, remove the dates and digits. From that point on, it's actually kind of an exciting project. The funding piece is huge. That's going to be another big issue that has to be resolved. But I gotta believe that when you all consider the options, that funding is always a consideration. You know, how do we do this? You know, there's a whole bunch of ways to skin that cat. But as far as an update where we are today, you will know sometime next week, and I'll send it to you two, and you can disseminate, this is what we know, this is the data, and this is the data and the recommendation of the state, and you decide how to proceed. If the decision is to reuse some or all of those classrooms, I'm sure that the administrators in the high school will make it work. If the decision is not, I am sure they'll make it work. I think that's one thing I'm sure of, is that they are able to pivot and make these programs work regardless. And then the next piece will be, what are you all going to do about the ECA question? What's our path forward? So that's where we are today. Doesn't take long to say it, but it's going to be a long time before it's done.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions?
Just to clarify, the rooms that they tested this week are the rooms that were not tested the last time?
They tested all of them. So on the second floor B wing.
Yep.
Where that group of classrooms was taken offline.
Right.
They tested all of them.
Okay.
They tested the ones that had an exceedance and the ones that didn't.
But these were the ones that were below the level, but because they were.
All of them.
They were next to the rooms that were too high.
So.
They were lumped into that closure, right?
So with a.
I had the map.
With a nod to Mr. Fogg, I will say this. Those groupings, those contentious groupings are appropriately a subjective measure. The people who did the survey said those ten rooms, or in this case, those fifteen rooms, or the twelve rooms, all are built at the same time, with the same materials, have the same thing. The scientific process is to test ten percent and make an informed assumption, which is what they did. In the last meeting, when that assumption was challenged, the state agreed to go back and test again, right?
Now we're looking at different temperatures, right?
This is my point about it's only objective on the day the test is done, which is what makes it tricky for you all, because you're going to be asked to make a judgment based on something that was true yesterday, that's different, that could be possibly different than something that was true two months ago, that could possibly be different in two months when the doors are closed and the heat's on. And I can tell you anecdotally that there is a correlation between air temperature and the rate of outgassing. I will tell you that is an anecdotal correlation. That's all I, that's all I got. I wish I could tell you that at this temperature, it does this thing, but nobody can. I can show you the graph, and the graph is exactly that. But. So, yeah, they tested all of them, which.
Okay.
Was a response to the questions that came out of that last meeting.
Right.
Interestingly, little side note, they're paying for that. And I tried really hard to get them to say, since the timing coincided with our required quarterly air sampling, could we have one mobilization with one contractor and do it all at once, and maybe save us all a little money? And they said, no. And they said, you have to wait until we're done with this, till you do that. I think it's because they wanted these two data sets to be discreet. But it's really, it's a snapshot. So it is, it is possible that a room that had an immediate actual exceedance could have nothing, and it's possible that a room that had nothing still has nothing or has a school actual level exceedance.
And where these tests were performed while the students were in the building, at least, so there's.
In the building, yeah.
Extra air movement in the hallways or whatever, but with the doors closed?
Theoretically, I can tell you, what's interesting, one of the things that's interesting is Monsanto sent a team down yesterday, the same team they've sent twice before, to do exactly the same thing, which is to measure the air exchange in the classrooms. They come in with this stuff, and they put one over this vent, and put one on that vent, do something, and it gives them some measurement. That measurement has been exactly the same every time. So I think, again, anecdotally, it's safe to say, well, I can tell you that all of our equipment is running as best, as well as it's ever going to run, and it's safe to say that the air exchange in the rooms has been consistent. So, you know, that's not, I wish I could tell you I could change the filters or turn up a fan, or, I believe we have exhausted those resources.
That doesn't take it out of the concrete? Interesting.
Well, no, it just, it doesn't have an impact, a measurable impact.
Right, yeah. No, I mean, I think I would defer to Nelson and Roy and Ben on this. They've already got a plan in place. The students have already started. I wouldn't want to disrupt what they've already planned for. We know that they're there. I don't know what the rest of the board feels like, but I don't, I don't think that they want to replan everything that they've just done or move people around, even if the tests come back. If we have more rooms fall, we'll have another conversation. But I, yeah. Thank you, Jonathan.
I have a question. So after all the tests come back and we get all the results, and it's down to our final decision, and we say, we're going to do complete reconstruction, we're going to get rid of all the bad and put up the good. What do you think will be that timeline? Is that a good question?
Let me go get my.
I'm told I ask some really good ones.
My crystal ball. So here's the thing. You know, I joke about, once we get to that point, it's just a project. It's just a big project, but it's a little bit more complicated than that, because at the ECA, it's interesting. So on the face of it, one of the things included in the ECA is an estimate for each cost, but it is a very broad-brush estimate. It'll be an estimate by people who've never been in the building about things they've never done. So it will give you an order of magnitude in relation to other options. Like, the best way to think of it, and I thought of this after a conversation today, is not to think of it as a set of numbers you can hang your hat on, but a scale, right? So if encapsulation is A and abatement is A cubed, that's how you think about cost. But to hang your hat on the numbers they provide has not worked anywhere. So once we have a choice made, my next step is then to actually begin putting that abatement project out to bid, right? And that is where contractors come in and say, it's going to cost X millions of dollars. This is our mobilization time. If we choose to do it in phases, what does that mean? You know, there's a lot of moving parts to get this done. Now, you know, I said way back in the beginning, if Nelson had come to me and said, I just, somebody gave me ten million dollars, I want a new gym, I'd say, great, let's start talking about it, and we'll start doing it in five years. We don't have five years, and nobody gave him a check. So, so the reality, I guess, you know, all of that, I say all of that to say this, it depends on how we, how the district decides to phase this work in terms of abatement and supportive programs, and it depends on what we decide to do and can afford to do in terms of reconstruction, right? If we have some sort of blue-sky settlement, which is possible, we're looking at, you know, essentially a new building, which is exciting and could turn into a really exciting option, and frankly, could be a really good thing for the district in the context of what's going on in the state of Vermont. If we end up with something less than that, we'll have to decide how to proceed and what we need the outcome to be, and all of those decisions will determine the time. If you say to me, how long is it going to take to knock down a building? I could get you an answer in a couple weeks, but I'm not sure if we're going to execute it in the most effective way, from a straight-up construction permit. This is a multi-year project. This is not a summertime thing. This is not, this is not the best room that we can do in, you know, in five months. This is a very carefully phased, multi-year project that is going to involve, by its very nature, as much programmatic work as it is construction. Again, it gets easy for me once you all decide what you're going to do. It gets really hard for the people who actually do school stuff to figure out what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? And I can't see Kevin, so I'm a little hesitant. You know, if he has any.
I'm all set.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
We've been here before.
Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan. Next is the proposed Hartford School District Board of Directors' work plan for school year twenty-five, twenty-six, and Katie and Erin are going to talk to us about that. And Katie and Aaron are gonna talk to us about that.
Thank you. So, we looked at a number of different models, different templates that are used around the state, as well as some of our former templates that were used in the district. And then, just to provide the public with a little history, we reviewed those at our retreat on August 14th to determine the direction we wanted to go in setting out a work plan draft for the board's consideration, and in collaboration with Board Chair Russell, as well as Assistant Superintendent Aaron Tomlinson. And I would like to publicly thank the superintendent from Winuski, Wilmer Chivaria, for sharing their board's work with us. We ultimately landed on adopting that template. And Aaron, I would like to also thank, who has pored over this template, and even linked all of the mandated policies, the recommended policies, as well as organized some of the policies we have that are not mandated or recommended by the VSA for the board's consideration. Also linked in the plan are the governance process policies that will need to be monitored by the board, as well as the delegation and management policies that will also be managed by the board, and the executive limitations that will be monitored by myself. So I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to kind of walk us through this work, and orient the board a bit to the document. And one of the pieces of work that needs to be accomplished tonight is to think about the delegation, particularly of the monitoring reports by the board, and when those reports will be presented back during our meetings throughout the year.
Great. Thanks, Katie. So you will see on the document here that we have the agenda, we have the minutes. One of the new items is a monitoring report template, which is something that we put together based off several of the other documents that we had seen. So that's, this is something that we would like some feedback from the board to say, yep, this looks like this is what we wanna use. If not, I can make changes to that. But that is something that we're gonna need to decide on how we wanna move forward with that. Also, in here are the federal state mandated policies. We have our acceptable use. And then, we also have to accept the transgender and non-conforming student policy. So that is on the agenda tonight as well. So, and then you will see in the executive limitations, or the B&amp;M delegation, governance process, it has things linked there. I've only linked things up until the end of this calendar year, and then we will take a look. I would love to have some of the board's input on that, to make sure that we're doing this in a manner that the board approves of all
Somehow, we're not getting a screen share. Can we try to redo it or something? I see the agenda.
How's that? That's the agenda?
Yeah. Here we go. So maybe reinitialize, like, I don't know, maybe end that, end that screen share, and reinitialize whatever windows open, or whatever you wanna share. I think if you go in and just stop the screen share on this. You have to stop screening.
Gotcha.
There you go.
Perfect. I better...
There it is.
Thank you. If I move, is that still good?
Yep.
So along with this work is the ends policy, and Katie and I are gonna be working with our administrative council team to be working on what makes sense in aligning this, the ends policy, along with vision of graduate work. So we'll be putting some of those things together, so we can report out and have different folks throughout our district be part of the presentation that have really dug into that work. So that's what we will be doing there. So, I think maybe, Katie, is there anything more that you wanna add to that?
I don't think so. I think, you know, really, ultimately, what the board needs to determine tonight is, as Aaron mentioned, one, does that monitoring report template look good to the board in terms of what is required with information to present back for the report back on those particular policies when they're up? And the delegation of the policy work up until laid out, which is the calendar year.
Has, have y'all had a chance to look at these?
Yes. I like what Aaron's done with the policies and scheduling them out. I would like to see maybe the, if we can find, I know that it's not on all of our policies, but the last time they were actually monitored, or, and I'll search for them too, if I can edit the spreadsheet there.
Yep.
The last time they were warned, when they were warned initially, when they were monitored the last time, and maybe prioritize some of the older ones first, if they need to be changed.
Yep.
Or if there's any, I guess, immediate, obviously, the ones that we're missing are the required ones first, likely. But we probably have some that we need to address sooner rather than later, just from changes in the state, or other items that the school may need themselves.
Right. And I can also look at when the last time the state updated them as well.
That's what we're using with our audit report at the school board, the VTS.
Do you have a copy of that?
Give us.
Does, do you have a copy of the audit, of the policy audit that we got, that we had done?
Yeah. That's what I did a lot of this work from.
Okay, yeah, okay. Just wanted to be sure.
But you're referring, Jeremy, just for clarification, you're referring not to the policy audit and the VSA mandated and recommended policies, but rather the policies that you're all monitoring through governance and the management and delegation of the board.
These are the ones that we're monitoring?
Yes. Not necessar...
Just these?
Yes, those as well.
This and this?
Yep. GP A.
Yeah, the GPs and the Bs.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's what we're looking at now. Kevin, do you have any comments?
No. Had a chance to review, you know, the new template, and it's, let's say, the evolution of what we've worked on for the last several years. So it's just the next phase.
Okay, so if the board doesn't have any more comments on the template, do we have to vote on that? We don't have to vote on that, do we?
No, it's just approval
Okay, that's
Of our process.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. So I really like it. I think it's, for me, it's easier to read, and it's quicker to get the information from. So with that being said, would we like to adopt, using this template, for our monitoring?
Yes.
Yes? Yes? Yes. Okay.
If you'd like, if you'd, if you'd like a motion, just for the record, you know, I'd be happy to
Okay.
Make a motion that we adopt the presented proposal at the, at tonight's meeting for our new format for our work plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Super. Now, what I would really like to do tonight also is look in on the board management delegation for the BSR policies that we need to be monitoring. And I'm not sure which is gonna be the best way to do this. Before, I think, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, we just kind of assigned people the different ones for that and for the governance process? Is that correct?
Yes, we just divided it, so everybody, you know, did, you know, two or three.
Right. Okay.
You know, there was no major formula, you know, unless there was a conflict of timing, you know?
Right.
You know, like, in Jeremy's case, with him working on the policies that are under review, you know, we might wanna spread, you know, his out, so that there, there's not a heavy load, you know, every meeting.
Right.
So that would be my only thought there.
Okay, thank you. Since Kevin's done this for a number of years, and I haven't, so I rely on that. Do you have a preference as to how we do this, the board members? No? Let me just start signing them to you? Okay, well then, let's start with BSR1, Global Governance Management Connection. I'll start at the end. Kathy?
What have, are you working off of right now, going through?
You gotta go back to the school district.
No, I'm not.
Oh, none on the tablet?
I wanted to get these, so I could
Yeah.
Rattle them off. No, I'm not.
Some Murray in the document.
We're not looking at the linked.
Just, I'm sorry with the bifocals, I can't read that far. I'm sorry. All right, that's EL, so that, that belongs to Katie. For agenda planning.
So that would, that's just what I've got.
So that's what you've got. Okay, have y'all got, have you got, under the Hartford District site?
So it's right here too, Nancy?
Oh, thank you. Eyes in the back of my head are gone tonight.
So in this model, I've alternated the ones between the B&amp;M delegation and the governance process. So you'll see one's one week, one's the next, so...
Okay, shall we just do that? Have you got it, so we can follow along?
Yeah, it looks like we're doing one every meeting, or every other meeting.
Right.
Yeah. So the next one up would be the GP4 Agenda Planning.
Right, for the 17th. Okay, Kathy, you wanna take that one?
Sure.
And it's linked from
Yeah, I see. So which, which one, because there's EL4 by a mutual condition, is
That is done by the superintendent. The ELs are all done by superintendent.
Correct.
So I have this one. So have you got it? Okay, GP5, School Board Chair.
You want that one, Nancy?
I'll take that one.
I don't know if you can.
Oh, sure. No, probably not. That would be a good thing to monitor.
I'll take that.
You monitored me, okay? And then I'll take BSR1, the Global Governance. GP8 will give to Garrett. B S... I'm sorry, I can't read those letters from here.
SR.
Thank you. Will give to Kevin? And then shall we just start all over? Kathy, you take GP6. Jarrett, you take BSR3.
Jeremy? Right?
Pardon me?
Jeremy, not
I'm sorry. Yes, Jeremy.
Just checking.
I'll take GP1. I can't see them from here, I'm sorry. What's the next one?
BSR4.
Yes, okay.
Would go to Garrett.
And that will go to Garrett.
GP2 Governing Style to Coach.
Yes, please. Can you just read them out, Kathy?
BSR5 would go to me. GP7 Board would go to Jeremy. GP3 Board Jobs would go to Garrett. And GP9 Governance would go to Nancy.
Did I get them all? Thank you, Sam.
Oh, wait. That's all I see that's in here.
There should be nine on one, and yeah, five or six on the other. And then the superintendent, aren't you lucky? You get all the ELs. Sorry, folks, I have bifocals, and I can't read from here, all the way down to the head. It just doesn't work. These are gonna be a little bit different, because, well, actually, you can explain this better than I, how we're gonna work this monitoring, right?
Sure, I'll try.
Would you please?
Sure.
Since you developed it, yes, thank you.
So now that folks have chosen that, and the dates are assigned, just be prepared to present on your date. I do wonder, what are we gonna do with the federal and state mandated policies? That's number five. There's all of those as well, which was part of the report.
Those I think we're gonna read. I can read those, I can have those, I'll have them for review.
Okay.
Where basically, what we had discussed earlier, was just adopting the examples from the VTS.
VSA.
Okay.
VSA. And where they don't line up with ours, that's when we would defer to you all to make a judgment call.
Okay.
And then, those that we do have to make changes, we'd have to send out to Bernie to vet.
Okay.
So they don't change the intent of the policy, but
Right, okay.
We can certainly revisit.
So, but, so Jeremy, you have those here?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So yeah, so I believe that now that everybody's signed up, they know where their date is, and which one they have, they'll be able to be prepared to do that.
And I'll have some more to add by 10:15 as well.
Yes. Yes.
Just a few.
Thank you.
And I wanna thank Katie and Aaron both for the work that they did to get us all lined up again, and get us all caught up again also. Thank you both very much. Yes, Kevin?
Go ahead, Coach.
Nancy?
Yes, sir.
Aaron, the template that you selected for the actual reporting, can you share that with all of us board members, so that we can familiarize ourselves with it? We've used several in the past, and it would just be nice to have a heads up on the format.
Yep, I'll make sure you have it. It's linked in the agenda and the annual planning agenda. It's linked in there, so you can get it there. But I'll share it with you directly as well, Coach.
Great, thank you.
Does the board want to see the template now, and have an opportunity to discuss it?
Sure. That would be wonderful. Can we do that?
Yeah, it's right behind you.
Is the icing back on the head again, or gone? Have a hard time seeing out the front. Do you have a quick, do you have a quick chance to look at it? See if you have any questions about it, any comments? See if you have any questions about it, any comments? Do you think, do you have anything, I'm sorry, do you, Erin, have anything that needs to be, that you think needs to be talked about, with those?
Well, it's not showing up, it's not showing up on the screen.
Yep, I'll get, yeah, Coach, just a second. So, yeah, so this just took different parts of the different monitoring reports that we had seen and I tried to just make it a little bit more succinct. One of the parts that Katie and I both liked was in the compliance status. It was a nice visual to look at. Some of the other ones were just really heavy with words and we felt like this was a little easier to, to look at. So, yeah, that's it and I'm happy to make whatever changes the board thinks we need, if we need any.
There were a lot of different, you know, as is what we've been uncovering, quite a few different formats. And if you wanted to have a look, those monitoring reports are still linked on the website. But you'll see there that there is variation and perhaps like stylistically, it was dependent upon who was monitoring. So this, I think, captures, you know, what we thought would be most helpful in order to standardize and have a universal template that when anyone would view, they would see the same information in the same format. So that was the intention, but Coach, you certainly and Nancy could weigh in on, on the functionality and the application of something like this for that work because we haven't used those reports either, these templates. So looking for that feedback, just to make sure that it's something that's really user-friendly for our purposes.
Kevin, do you have any comments on this?
I'll say it's, it's a good choice, having done it for a minute, as the, our students would say. And kudos to Katie and Erin for putting this version in front of us because, as you said, each reporter would generally modify it to, you know, their preference. So you would see maybe three or four different formats used during the course of the year amongst our five board members. So having a consistent document just makes a lot better sense and especially one that's as user-friendly as this one appears to be.
I have to completely agree with you, Kevin. I like it a lot. Again, thank you very, very much.
So from the new person perspective here, can you tell us what the process is? If we were, can we review these today and as long as it's done by that meeting? Or are we to review these publicly in an open meeting?
So, okay, in order to help, so if, depending on which one you were designed, you know, you would, you know, policy titled, you know, GP, you know, GP four.
Right.
Prepared by Jeremy, date, monitoring method. You know, direct inspection would be utilizing, you know, let's say, your notes, minutes, things of that, you know. And, and you could check a number of different ones. Like, for example, you know, a board decision was made to adopt a certain functionality.
Coach, I guess, my question is, so I could prepare this at any time, but then I present it at the meeting that it's warned, is where I'm headed? That was my question, is just on procedure?
Yep.
Okay.
Any, you know, anytime, you know, that's, that's up to us, basically.
Thank you. Guess my only thing is, can I convert this to a PDFing that can be filled out electronically and sent it back to you? I'll do that.
Well, we'll see that, you know, that's why I liked, you know, this format. And, you know, if, if you're doing it in, you know, Word or, you know, Google Docs or what have you, you know, it's, it's pretty flexible, you know.
Again, my sincere thanks for both of you, this hard work. I know it took along a little bit of a time there. Discussion of ends policy work? Is that?
I, I think that was just what Erin already went over with you all about how we want to do, work with the Administrative Council team to determine what's going to make the most sense in terms of monitoring the ends and the information that we can present and provide to all of you in order to assess our complacency or not in relation to the ends policies, as well as to line them up as much as we can with the vision of a graduate so that throughout the year, you'll be able to see the work we're doing in relation to those ends policies and now the vision of a graduate and be able to make an informed assessment of our compliance with those policies and the interpretation of them.
Super, super. Let's go to policy work. Jeremy, you are up front.
Okay, so this will be the first reading of Policy D three, which is the Responsible Computer Network and Internet Use. It is the policy of Hartford School District Supervisory, Hartford School District, we'll leave that part out, to ensure that students are educated about appropriate usage of the online computer network and internet. B, prevent user access over his computer network to or transmission of inappropriate material via internet, electronic mail, or other forms of direct electronic communications. C, prevent unauthorized access and other unlawful online activity. D, prevent unauthorized online disclosure, use, or dissemination of personal identification information of minors. And E, comply with the Children's Internet Protection Act and any other applicable state and federal laws. This policy applies to any users who access the district's network, collaboration, and communication tools, and/or student information systems either onsite or via a remote location. Anyone who uses the district's IT devices either onsite or via a remote location shall have no expectation of privacy in anything they create, store, send, receive, or display on or over the district's computers or network resources, including personal files and electronic communications. Administrative responsibilities. The superintendent, superintendent or designee shall ensure the following. One, an annual process for educating students who, educating students about responsible digital citizenship as defined in this policy. A responsible digital citizen is one who, A, respects oneself, users will remain appropriate, will maintain appropriate standards of language and behavior when sharing information and images on social, social networking websites and elsewhere online. Users refrain from disturbing, distributing personally identifiable, identifiable information about themselves and others. B, respects others. Users refrain from using technologies to bully, tease, or to harass other people. Users will report incidents of bullying and harassment in accordance with the district's policies on bullying and harassment. Users will also refrain from using another person's system account or password or from presenting themselves as another person. C, protects oneself and others. Users protect themselves and others by reporting abuse and not forwarding inappropriate materials and communications. They are responsible at all times for the proper use of their account by not sharing their system account password. D, respects intellectual property. Users suitably cite any and all use of websites, books, media, et cetera. Protects, E, protects intellectual property. Users request to use the software and media others produce. Two, the same rules and expectations govern student use of IT resources as applied to other student conduct and communications, including but not limited to the district's harassment and bullying policies. Three, the internet service providers and other contractors comply with applicable restrictions on the collection and disclosure of student data and any other confidential information stored in district electronic resources. Four, the use of technology protection measures that provide for the monitoring and filtering of online activities by all users of district IT resources, including measures that protect against access to content that is obscene, child pornography, or harmful to minors. Five, procedures to address the following. A, control of access by minors to inappropriate matter on the internet and world wide web that is, one, obscene, two, child pornography, or three, harmful to minors. B, the safety and security of minors when using electronic mail, social media sites, and other forms of direct electronic communications. C, prevention of unauthorized online access by minors, including hacking and other unlawful activities. D, unauthorized disclosure, use, dissemination of personal information regarding minors. E, subject to approval by authorized personnel, technology protection measures may be disabled for use by adults to enable access to bona fide research and other lawful purposes. Limitation disclaimer, or limitation and disclaimer of liability. The district is not liable for unacceptable use or violations of copyright restrictions or other laws, user's mistake, or negligence, and costs incurred by users. The district is not responsible for ensuring the accuracy, age, appropriateness, or usability of any information found on the district's electronic resources network, including the internet. The district is not responsible for any damage experienced, including but not limited to loss of data or interruptions of service. The district is not responsible for the accuracy or quality of information obtained through store, obtained through or stored on the electronic resources system, including the internet, or for financial obligations arising through their unauthorized use. The duties imposed on the district by this policy do not operate to make the district vicariously or directly responsible for the conduct of its users, which violate this policy, or any of the general code of conduct of other policies. Enforcement. The district reserves the right to revoke access privileges and/or administer appropriate disciplinary actions for misuse of its IT resources, including any conduct which separately violates, violates the prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying policy, or other code of conduct or district policies, and for anyone using another person's system account or password or presenting themselves as another person. In the event that there is an allegation that a student user has violated this policy, the school district shall handle the allegation consistent with the student disciplinary policy. Allegations of staff member violations of this policy shall be processed in accord with contractual agreements and legal requirements.
Thank you very much. That'll be the first reading and only reading.
Next up, we, we will now vote on the approval of the policy of C twenty-eight, transgender and gender nonconforming students, that was first read and warned on July thirtieth. This is not required to be read again.
That's correct.
I move to approve the policy as warned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and it is approved. Thank you very much, Jeremy, for your hard work.
So, so, Madam Chair, and Jeremy, if there are any suggested edits, they could or should be made between now and the next reading, correct?
Yes, for the, the responsible use policies, they, those comments should happen now, as they were warned.
Right, okay. I just wanted to get that out there for the board.
Yeah, we could move public comments up next meeting potentially so that they could address concerns prior to the approval vote.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Next on our agenda is public comments. The board welcomes public comments. In order to accommodate as many community member voices as possible, anyone making a comment will be given two minutes to speak. This is not a time for discussion, but the board is interested in hearing comments, concerns, and suggestions from the public. Yes, Sherri?
For those who don't know me, I'm Sherri Torrey. I live in Plainfield, New Hampshire. I am a Hartford alumni. I retired from the district with thirty-six years of experience. I taught in three schools under seven different principals and had, in my thirty-six years, eight hundred plus students, but I also substituted for an additional five years. So who knows how many students I worked with in those five years. This is a little late, but it's the first time I've been able to make a comment during a board meeting. I was sad to hear in June of Rick Dustin Eichler's resignation. I ended my career with him as principal at Dothenbrooke School. I found him to be student-centered. He greeted students in the morning on the sidewalk. He often was the administrator or staff member that said goodbye to the walkers and riders at the end of the day in the cafeteria. He supported staff with team time for us to collect data, do analysis, and plan for best practices to improve student learning. DBS was an exemplary PBS school under his leadership, and he was also named the Vermont Principal of the Year. I'm disappointed that he wasn't able to explore other career opportunities in Hartford. He would have been great at any other position. I was hoping he'd finish his career here, and I'm sorry to see, I'm sorry to see him leave, but I wish him the best. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri, that was very nice. Do we have any other public comments? Yes, sure.
You got, come up to the mic. Yeah, you gotta come up, otherwise the people online will have at us.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jennifer Opelinski and I'm your new Director of Adult Education. I want to give a shout out to Erin Tomlinson, who is an amazing on-boarder, and I inherited a lot of great work from him. But I wanted to just quickly tell you that from July one to now, we have really been rolling, and I wanted to give you the lineup for the summer, fall, and what's upcoming in adult ed. So just so people in the community know, we're just finishing up the Trailblazers program with Vermont Works for Women, and so their graduation is this Thursday, five o'clock. We're going to celebrate their great work and kiosk that they built in the wood shop, the construction trades, is going over to the Fruit Forest and the Public Forest in Hartford, so we're really excited about that. I wanted to also say that Excel, Microsoft Excel is online for this fall. Welding on track for this fall, a culinary enrichment class, which will be offered November eighth, which is one where you can grab your friends and just spend a nice day cooking with Chef Jay. That'll be at Farmview. That's a full day event. And then we have trainings with O'Reilly Auto Parts, Sustainable Energy Training, an apprenticeship meeting with the Public Works Department and the Hartford Town Manager to try to get some wastewater operators here through an apprenticeship program. And then we have LNA online for the spring and a medical assistant program that we're looking into. So I just want to say thank you for having me. I'm very excited for the job and look forward to come back and reporting periodically. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's exciting. Do we have anyone online? No hands raised? Nothing from the audience, so, okay. We thank you, both of you, for, for your public comments. We move to the Consent Agenda, Section Four, Policy GP four, Appointments, Resignations, and Retirements.
I do have one appointment for the board's consideration. Christopher Hopkins, who would be joining the Wilder School as Head of School.
Can you tell us a little bit more?
Sure, I'm happy to elaborate.
Thank you.
So Chris would be joining us from Chicopee, Mass, and has extensive administrative experience. As you know, we received the resignation of the prior leader a little later in the year. So we began in earnest to put together a hiring committee over the summer. We waited quite some time for candidates to consider to apply for the position and put together a hiring committee later in the summer, in August. And so after going through the process and, you know, checking references and following our hiring processes, the committee wanted to offer Mr. Hopkins the position. And it would be, as are other hires, after July one, an interim year. And then a more extensive search would be conducted again in the spring.
Thank you. Kevin, you've got anything on this?
No, the, you know, I do trust our process. We've been very successful, you know, over the years, and it keeps evolving. That's the other part of it. You know, it isn't a stagnant process. So knowing how much fidelity there is in the process, I'd like to have us welcome the accepted candidate.
Is that like a motion? Is that just an acceptance? Do we have to have a motion for this? I don't think so.
You have to have a motion for the Consent Agenda.
For the Consent Agenda. Oh, yes. But not for, not for Chris. Yes, yes.
No, that was, that was just a comment about our process.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. All right, and we need to approve the minutes from seven thirty twenty-five and from the board retreat, August fourteenth of twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
For the Consent Agenda, sorry. I didn't finish that, did I?
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Our next board meeting will be September the seventeenth, right here. And do we have someone who would like to do the meeting avail?
Sure, okay. Board meeting moderating for September third, twenty twenty-five. The board was prepared for the meeting. Satisfactory. The board's time was spent on ends, not means. Satisfactory. Each board member was given an opportunity to participate. Satisfactory. Board treated all persons with courtesy and fairness. Satisfactory. Board adhered to Robert's Rules of Order. Satisfactory. Board adhered to its adopted governance style. Satisfactory.
Okay, thank you. And this meeting?
Madam Chair.
Sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
Just a quick comment, if I may.
Of course.
And this is to the public. I probably could have made it during the public comment. But we just want to make sure that the community is aware that as the restructuring of public education in the state of Vermont is occurring, a number of us, both administrators, board members, and other educators in the district are serving on some of the committees in that reconstruction process. In addition to that, we have tried to be preemptive in the decision process for reorganizing districts. And there are conversations that are starting to occur between districts throughout the state so that we're not mandated with who we might partner with. So just to make folks aware, and in all transparency, hopefully, we'll be reporting on some of those conversations within the next few meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Yes, there are a number of us that are serving on those committees. Many hours. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Does not need a second. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for coming.